And strike through, move it all up to A from D. Yeah, do it all together.
Okay. Mike and Heather all for this decision?
Yeah, and it's all on resolution if you will.
So they'll just make a possible.
Yes.
That it.
That's it.
Not much different to do with those Chinese. Sir, sir.
Sir.
Well, I don't. Starfish. We have.
Thanks for the opportunity to address your problem. Can't have the very vicious, further before. Only remind you of the two studies that were done here. We imagine Robinson and Kate was Graham County and it were done by professional pass, unblinded professional pass. The Baltimore was involved, was important, maintaining the discipline. Officers downtown, think take it out of the way, take it away from town, downtown was suffered significantly. Uh, previous meeting, I presented to you a plan where Justice Building could be located on Ford Street. It wasn't actually going to be on, built on Ford Street. The plan was that it would be actually accessed Court House Square. And I was clean and they considered this and it was rather long, included this in their deliberations. And unfortunately, I wasn't here for the meeting, public meeting, my fault. It was before I started, I just missed it. Uh, but looking at the drawings, it seems without that to me, they're totally misconstrued my intention. Their drawing, uh, shows, which is the town road was the drawing? It shows that they really, building is on Ford Street, totally on Ford Street, but the entrance would be on Ford Street. And, uh, and because they take, put it on the, on the flat ground, it's taken up all of the flat area, so there's no space for parking. Previously, I planned out the building off the hill against Court House Square. There would be plenty of room for parking on that area, presently behind that hotel and behind that hotel. They changed that and in doing so, it caused a lot of issues to be any. This building now, because it would be downtown, it wouldn't be downtown, it would be unfortunate. So it would still draw business away from downtown because it couldn't be accessed from downtown. They did put a little walkway, uh, elevated walkway, as they call it, to me, it's like a skylight. It's approximately a hundred and fifty feet long, scaling the building about from Court House Square. Basically, back in the, I don't know who's going to use that walkway. I mean, it could be, but it's up in the air nowhere. This one might be a tourist attraction like Grand Royal Metro or something, yeah. But, uh, it's going to be dangerous, it's going to be wind and rain and wet, slink, whatever. It's going to be not anything longer than wanting to use, basically. That's what I mean. They also made some comments out there that, uh, in, whether the dangers they listed as being, uh, predicated basically on, on the misunderstanding of my intentions. So they've got, like, put a note in there somewhere that the increased price would be something like at least the base price, something like three hundred percent base price, based upon a need or a, a multi-story apartment garage. There is no need for multiple, uh, apartment garage. Now, my plan had some other good parking, but that was leading to the charges against the officers, whatever. Figured them in, take it right up to the courthouse. Also, for the, uh, police department could bring their vehicles right in, they're bringing in, and maybe change either one right into the building and secure them out. Kind of the only bottom in the building itself was the integrity. Excuse me, look at him, my memory's bad, if I don't look at something, I'll get something. And, uh, seeing on, on their comment, you're like, three hundred percent increase, that's enough to make anybody say, forget that idea. It's way too expensive, and I agree, it would be way too expensive, but it's an wrong premise. I wouldn't vote for it on basement Ford Street anyway. It needs to be on Court House Square, the main entrance should be on Court House Square. And that's what I intended and, uh, if you're looking at these, one of the next, the next sketches, the, uh, taken the, the, basically there, there, this one here showing it's, uh, the building pushed up right onto Court House Square, you can say a hundred foot, a hundred and ten foot front exit, it's enough, plenty of room there for a building to get in. My next two drawings show my concept, what it, what it might have liked from the front of Court House Square. It could be a good-looking building, it could be made in the style of the existing courthouse, or whatever style you wanted. It would be right up there, all you need is a little space in the front. Well, I suggest a little space in front for a fountain and planters and, uh, for seating or whatever else, or people which enjoy being outside of courthouse. The last sketch, here's a, like an elevation, mine, I'm an engineer, I'm not an architect. Showed that the building would have probably set down the hill, but it would be built into the hill. Now, that flat area now, front of the building, should be plenty of room for parking. If it's not enough for parking, there's actually additional space across the street, across on, on north side of Ford Street, uh, for here, for here. Maybe, uh, Ford Street, that is railroad access, right away, which, uh, railroad right away, which is sixty feet wide, which could be used for overflow parking, and that would be a committed purpose of that, that, that land is designated. It'd only be used for parking use, it can't be sold or used for anything else except parking use. It's not, then it has to revert back to the original ground floor. So parking for, for parking purposes like that would be fine, wouldn't be a structure there necessarily, block off anything. But that would be overflow parking, perfectly legitimate, used for that, that public, sixty feet wide. Long as you get a lot of parking in that kind of space. Look, there's also, there's still parking on the county-owned property, uh, near Liz, for people who wanted to access the courthouse from, the courthouse square. There wouldn't be that much traffic, there'll be a lot of space left for tourists to come downtown and for people to patronize the local businesses. And if you went into, if they came a problem, we'll put a little meter box or something, it's a two-hour parking or whatever. You know, then, uh, people that have all day to business and, or that we go around the Ford Street and enter the parking spot there, plenty of signs, make it easy for people to understand where to park. Now, the, the overall smaller footprint is actually, uh, could, could improve on construction costs. You build up, it's a little cheaper, it's expensive to build it out. You need elevators, but you, that, that was in the original plan, it was planned for Fort Hill, anyway, it's to add elevators. Through the lines of the town, offices now, it's run across the back of the road. Very east can be combined with, with the sewers from the New, New Justice Center, run, run down entirely, large sewer lane, unfortunately. I know the initial cost is important, I'm not, I'm not putting that down, six, three hundred percent, you get excited, I don't think it's anything like the reality. But this building is going to serve to Graham County for many decades to come. Present building has been up there eighty years or something, uh, it's just outgrowing itself, but it's a good building. Whatever you put up now, designed in the right way, it's going to be there for maybe a couple of hundred years. So it's, it's worth looking, a long-term investment rather than just the first, the initial cost. Fort Hill location had previous, to this, considered, discussed before, traffic issues over there are significant. You were getting outstanding, I don't know if there are any environmental issues there at all. I know they're good service, but I don't know if that's anywhere near what you'd propose a building, but that I'm sure. Any remediation of anything for that would add to the cost of building, putting a building up in that location. And, um, just referring again to the study for the, I, I called, uh, Bill Turner, who was the primary architect of those two studies for the, uh, and told him the town's thinking of moving, uh, Justice Center and all of those associated offices out of town. He said, well, that'd be just like growing the ball on Robinson in terms of business. It would just totally destroy the business because the business downtown relies so much on the municipal businesses. So around there, taking it that way, is what the businesses that are there now, like the one I know, coffee shop, they're, they're people prepared to invest in town, but they need the encouragement of knowing, I think, that it's going to be Justice Center right there to give them a little more business. So I hope that, uh, the, uh, work that you're doing, your engineers, uh, if you revisit it, because who would ever want an incorrect, incorrect front premise? Thank you. Actually, we've got a write-out view of, uh, what I've talked about, I made a point years ago, giving presentations should never give anything out of the people, during the first day, because they spend their time reading it, trying to get ahead of it, and they don't listen to what you're trying to say. This basically says, what I talked about, maybe a little more eloquent.
Do you have any question, questions? All right.
Good, thanks, sir.
Um, are you in the lobby?
How are you all, happy new weekend? Um, I'm just here basically kind of doing a little follow-up from January. Um, this is just basically a letter to you all, kind of just to remind you, please check into this matter and all this interview with us. Okay, I guess I'm just kind of an alarmed person at this point. Um, on January tenth of this year, I get a hand in enough car, uh, copies of an article from, um, Popular Mechanics Magazine for you all to go over, and it's about the crypto mines in Cherokee County and the trouble that they're causing to the residents there in Murphy. And I just wanted, I'm, I'm basically here tonight to see what's happened, have you discussed this? Is anybody looking into it to see, you know, what this, any, this issue, is anybody thinking about it or anything like that? Um, I know a lot of surrounding counties are taking a proactive stance on this. We have, Clay County has adopted a new ordinance, ordinance that states no crypto mining allowed. Haywood, Nathan and Jackson Counties are considering restrictions or banning crypto mining altogether. And Buncombe County is considering a one-year moratorium for further research on it. Um, I actually went to, to the crypto mines yesterday, or outside of them, because obviously you're not allowed in. Um, I went to the one on Harshaw Road in Murphy, and it's very noisy, very noisy. And, um, it has a highway close to it and you can still hear all this noise. So I would think in the quiet of night that it would also be much louder than what it was when I was sitting there at like nine thirty yesterday morning, listening to it. And then there is one in Marble, it's on the old road back there, probably old sixty-four or something, I don't know what the name of the road is, but it's, it's much quieter and it's built better, but again, we have a crypto mine almost in our backyard. Both of these places have eight-foot-high chain link fences with barbed wire around them, which, you know, for some reason, they seem to be very high-security areas. Um, I know someone in this county that had a relative that applied for a job there, not knowing exactly quite what was going on there. He turned down the job and had to sign a non-disclosure agreement. And all he would say was, when he turned down the job, that he thought it was too secretive, very high-security and very sketchy, which, that's very alarming to me. I don't think we need something in our county that's going to be that high security, I mean, obviously, there's something going on, and in this article that I presented to you all earlier, they're banned in China. So China's banning something, this ought to ring some bells for us, I think. Um, I'm sure none of you want this in your back door, your family's back door, or anybody else happens to listen to this in Graham County. And I just, you know, I don't want our county drilling, we got a beautiful county here, we got tourists coming here and you don't want people coming and hearing this. And, um, there's a lot of details in that article that I gave you, but one of the other things they did say in there is we'll raise our electric bills. And I'm sure nobody here wants our electric bills to be going up either, because it pulls so much of electricity. So I'm hoping that you all will just take a proactive stance on this and not take the waiting C stance like Cherokee County did, because now they're it's too late, they're ship to sail and they're just kind of stop with it. I have, um, video on my phone, which I was not supposed to, of how loud these things are, if any of you would like to hear it. It's, they're loud. Like I said, the one in Marble is much quieter, but it still doesn't, we don't, we don't need this in Graham County, we just don't. And the one in Murphy is very loud and noisy.
Considering that's the primary complaint is the noise.
The noise, the noise is my primary complaint, and like I said, you know, we just don't want to ruin our county with noise. I mean, it's a very nice quiet place, people come here to hike, they come here to canoe or kayak or whatever, you know, everything. We've got a lot of outdoors, I know we've got a lot of motorcycles, but we have a lot of outdoor type things that people come here for, and people are living here for, you know, you want a nice quiet place. There are these people on this Harshaw Road, when I first started looking into this in like November, they're all putting their houses up for sale because the sound is so annoying. And again, that is all in that article that I turned in. The sound is my main thing, but I just don't think we need something like this, that China banned, and I just don't think we need something like this in Graham County, and I just want you to take some kind of look into this and see if there's anything that we can do before it happens.
We'll do our diligence, we'll reach out to our neighbor counties and see what they've done, and for sure, clients, seeing what their resolution says, I'll ask them their commission.
Uh, I appreciate that, I do want to tell you, um, if you go on the WLOS, uh, web, uh, website, there is a link to their investigative and, um, reports and things, because it was on last Thursday. And they do have the new ordinance there that Clay County drew up. When you, but when you go onto the part to make it larger and print it, it won't let them do that. So it's embedded in the article, it's eleven pages, pretty small, but you can read it, it's there, if you go onto the WLOS site. And I thank you all for listening.
Do you have any questions?
I do have that ordinance in your package.
Okay. Step ahead.
Oh, thank you so much, you're welcome. All right, thank you so much.
Sorry, I didn't want to trip over my covers. I guess my headphones on, I have such a hard time hearing in this building, and I was telling Lynn, I have some problems with my ears this week, so if you ask me questions, I'm going to have to move closer to you. So my name is Shelley Foreman, I'm the regional community relations director for Vaya Health. And I, Vaya Health is a public agency, and our role is to manage, um, Medicaid and state funding for people with mental health, substance use and developmental disabilities. Um, we have been in Graham County, um, since our inception in nineteen seventy-two, um, and have had a community-based board of directors, um, ever since that time. Um, I always want to take the opportunity, um, I'm not sure if Commissioner Orr is on the phone, uh, hello, Commissioner Orr, um, to thank her for her service on the Vaya Health Regional Board, and also as the vice chair of the Regional Board, she serves on our Board of Directors. And, um, Commissioner Cody, he actually is circling back to Vaya, he was a board member many, many years ago, as I think we were Smoky Mountain Center at the time, and then we changed our name as we've grown. Um, so thank you for your service on our Regional Board. Um, so I see you have a very long agenda tonight, and I'm going to give you the information you need about a proposal that the Department of Health and Human Services had, um, that greatly impacts not only Vaya and the role that we play in managing services, but it also impacts your DSS agency. Um, I did speak with Amy, and I know she was at a meeting with the tribe today, but she did let me know she was able to talk with you about this initiative last week. So hopefully I can fill in any gaps that you have or answer any questions. So basically, um, this time last year, um, I came to this board and received your support for Vaya Health, um, as well as, uh, DSS's support, um, to continue in the manner that we were going as far as managing services for the population that DSS serves. Um, the department has proposed what they're calling a s- uh, single statewide, uh, child and family specialty plan waiver, um, that would be managed statewide, so the, the insurance company that would take over this responsibility based on this proposal would have to serve the whole state of North Carolina, and they would be given the award to manage Medicaid services for children in foster care, and that, that has been now expanded to include not only children in foster care, but it would be any adult, parents coming into their in-home program. It could be extended to siblings of kids removed, um, due to foster care or in the in-home program. And basically, any caregiver or adult, um, that's in the child welfare system. So basically, it mandates, and if you look at the fact sheets, there's no choice. So these, uh, foster care children would have to go in to the statewide waiver, which, uh, would basically be one private insurance company, um, because LME, MCOs, there are six of us, and none of us have a statewide network of providers across the whole state. So if you want, uh, if I'm not speaking loud enough, you can tell me, I usually speak fairly loudly.
Hi, Shelley, uh, it's Connie, um, sorry I couldn't be there today, but, um, this is a huge, uh, concern um, for the people that we serve and the people who need serving all across North Carolina. We are overwhelmed already with the need that we have, and I'm, I'm sure all, uh, uh, the commissioners are so aware of the mental health disease that, uh, are prevalent in not only our county, but all counties. But having one, um, organization serve the whole county is, is a bit of a nightmare of a thought for those of us who, um, are familiar with how hard we struggle to get to these people, and most maybe of all of our people. And I know we, we have come out, uh, against a one company, uh, organization for the entire state. It gives me feel like it's more than overwhelming, it's already overwhelming. So, um, Shelley speaks the truth and, and she speaks with great concern, and we all have that concern, so, and I'm sure you're getting familiar with it too, Lynn, and if you have any questions, uh, about mental health, and certainly anything that, uh, you know of that we need in, uh, Graham County, I'm sure Shelley would be, would be happy to talk with you about it.
Right, so I, thank you, Commissioner Orr, we really appreciate that. Um, the department proposed this a year ago, we had your opposition to the state's Vaya Plan then. Um, they have now, really with very little fanfare, they introduced the bill, the department did, and it actually has gone through the Senate, and now is in the House. The state does not have the authority to do this unless the General Assembly passes it, it's signed into law, and then they have to go to the Center for Medicaid Services to have it, um, approved. So what we're asking is that you support us for the second time with the letter of opposition. Um, again, we know there are challenges in the service system, um, but we are working diligently. We have quarterly meetings with our, um, seven western DSS directors, we meet individually with them. Um, we have done a lot of work at the state level, um, I sent you some information about some of the initiatives that all six of the LME, MCOs have done to try to remove some barriers. Vaya has an embedded care manager, a Vaya staff person at her office, willing to assist her caseworkers in placement and finding services for those. And we, we just can't see how a single statewide, uh, insurance company that is a private insurance company could serve the very vulnerable populations that, that we and DSS currently serve. You definitely will lose the relationships that you have with people who've been in this community for, um, years. I mean, I've been with Vaya Smokey for twenty-four and a half years, and I've worked at Graham County since the very beginning. So, um, I could go on and on and give you a lot of information. What we're asking is that you mirror what Amy did in her letter to Secretary Kinsley and copy legislative delegation. I know Representative Gillespie actually reached out to his DSS directors in his region and got their feedback, so he's well-aware of the concerns. So we appreciate him reaching out, um, and just ask that you, um, not only support Vaya, but really support your DSS in maintaining these long-term, uh, public relationships where we can continue to best serve, uh, the children and adults in the child welfare system. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
We're, we're doing an excellent job, thank you for that. Yeah, the consequences of that happen, especially to a place like Graham County, it's going to be terrible. And we, we have a.
I got it ready, I don't want to play in there, but it's.
Yeah, it'll, it'll happen.
Yeah, I received that you're there, if they're okay with that.
And I will say, so far, I've got two more board meetings, but all of our county commissioners for supported the first letter, and I only have two more meetings to attend, so you're amongst your, um, peers in the surrounding western counties.
I'll look if we have a resolution, maybe round the hour, but if we don't, we will.
Yeah, and I can send you, I do have the letter, right?
I don't think so.
I think we sent it, it basically is a, this, a similar letter to what you saw, I think.
If you don't, I've got a copy of it.
Okay.
I can't wait to, shit, I'm happy, because I've got a copy of it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you so much for your support, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Shelley.
Um, before we go on to him, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the board of head on. Motion.
Yeah. Got to recess this first.
I had a motion to recess the board of commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Motion reopen the board of the equal.
Motion.
Second.
Motion for adjournments, the board of the equalization.
Motion.
I made a motion to come back out of recess and open the board of commissioners' meetings.
Motion.
Killing that Paul Mary procedure, Jake. We had to do this before.
I'm for stage room.
Oh, yeah.
And first of all, just want to say thank you to all of you and for this opportunity, I'm sitting on my phone. I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you, I'm excited about it, I really am, and to represent y'all well, the community, and I do, I I love this community, I've been here for about eight years now, and, but I do love the community and I'm going to do my best. And I have big shoes to fill, Becky was absolutely amazing at what she did, and I think that she'll continue to share her knowledge with me and that, um, just be patient with me as I learn, and I hate making mistakes, so when I do make a mistake, I will learn from it and I will make a mistake again. So, um, I've got the reports in front of you.
Stop her approach. And appoint her with you.
She's interim right now.
Yeah, before she actually, like, say, say, let's, because technically, relatable. All right, I'm just going by the statute, this is, I'm referring to the statute. So do I have a motion to pass the resolution to appoint Stacy Carpenter as finance officer with full power and authority to act in the place instead of the Graham County Finance Officer, holding office in the pleasure of the appointing board or officials? Stacy Carpenter is appointed as an authorized official for Graham County Transit, Graham County Senior Center, Graham County Travel Tourism and Graham County Rural Development Authority.
Stacy Carpenter is appointed as an authorized official for Graham County Transit, Graham County Senior Center, Graham County Travel and Tourism, and Graham County Rural Development Authority. And that this resolution shall be effective with all its adoption.
We've got a motion to house that. On favor?
No, that's great. All right. And so you've got your reports in front of you. I did my best to hear what Becky and the process that she had in place, just so that we didn't confuse anything. And so our unrestricted cash balance as a 3/31 is in the green, and that's 8,586,504.25. And then at the bottom, you can see the different accounts for the capital projects. We've got the current balances there. And then it also shows you what it was this time last year. So you've got the comparisons. And then the interest that was earned off of those accounts is over to your right a hundred a month. And then it's also got the year-to-date total. And if you flip over to page two of that first report, it's highlighted in yellow, and then green is the current line. And this is our total tax collections. And so for the current year, we are at 123,823.20, which is up quite a bit from the prior year. And then the DMV collection was the 67,093.27. And then if we go on to page four, it's got highlighted the year-to-date numbers there. And then it's also got the percentage of the current year total levy, the real percentage, which is 96.30. And then the previous year-to-date, it was 95.73, so it's up just a little bit. And then the total levy amount is the 7,318,594.39. And if you continue on to page five, this is what has our revenues, expenditures. And it is highlighted there in yellow, and then the current line is in green. And our revenues were 1,342,364.54. Our expenditures were 2,543,923.28. So we did have a deficit this month. And I did consult with Becky on it, and she said it is to be expected as we're winding down the year. So... And you can flip over to page seven, and this is our sales tax collections. And so it's what we're recording for this month, but it's actually what was collected here in February. So it's 221,913.96, what was collected. And then our quarter cent sales tax collected. And we've got this down here. We've got to do a transfer to the capital projects fund. But the total amount is 986,312.49. And if we go on to page eight, this is the analysis of the past due taxes. And so we've updated this information with the information that Tuana puts together for us in the Taxation Service Office. And so we, in '22, '23 fiscal year, and we need to collect 314,659.93, so it's past due taxes. And then on the last page, page number nine, it's got our capital projects reports. And these are the current numbers for the different projects we have going on. And the election board about their motivation. And expenditures today, which is 263,620.20. Recreation building is at 202,731.16. The cemetery building is at 194,112.68. And Justice Center is at 362.5. And then the middle school county match, there's been no change there. So then our total today with county dollars is 222,676.59. And then the total middle school today is listed there as well. I think they just have their own final draw on that. And then the second report is just a departmental breakdown as far as what's been budgeted, what they've actually spent this period, and the percentage of what their budget is that they've spent and the percentage that they have remaining. And again, ideally, we want, we'd like for them to be at 33%, but now that can actually be lessened down as we're winding down this fiscal year. As a whole, we're at 31% as far as the general fund. That is all that I have on those reports. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, we did have a project ordinance for Graham County. And this is on the Little Snowbird. This is the strap project. It's on the Little Snowbird Flood mitigation project. And just due to the delays and everything, they've had to add in some extra funds. So there will be some additional funds, 18,800 on that that will have to be paid out. And so we need to approve those additional funds, and that is just for our, the project engineer. And then we've got the project ordinance here that needs to be signed by all the commissioners as well.
Do I have a motion to approve that ordinance?
Motion.
We will need permission to write the check for the 18A going back out.
All right. Motion to approve that expenditure by 18,800.
Motion.
Any other ideas?
Well, we did, we did select, the audit committee did select the auditors. We did choose to go with the RH Accounting, and she has sent over an engagement letter for us. So I do have several signatures that I need from... I believe on that one is just the chairperson, the chairperson and the county manager. So I'll need signatures on those four. And then also, we have all the signature cards for the bank that is updating all of the bank accounts so that I can be signatory. And they have, obviously haven't been updated in a long time. So she wanted us to go ahead and like update every one of them. So right now, I just have the United Community Bank ones ready, and there's like 19 of them that I'll need your signatures on. And then I'll have the United, or the North Carolina Hospital Management Trust ones I'll later date, and I'll bring those three outside as well.
And we had one more up there in the red folder. Which one is that? We'll stick to call you today.
G9. So you've got, you've got another one?
I have one more. I'll have five for you guys this time. Everybody have one color.
Done good.
Thank you. It's a little stressful pulling off all the numbers today, but we got it. It was a team effort.
Any other comments? You want me to get that for you?
No. I needed to walk.
No comment. Discussion items. Leases of 299.06. Motion to approve that lease. Second. The letter of support for the CISOs requested by Pastor Eric Reese. What is that?
Okay, this company comes in and they do blood pressure checks, glucose checks. It's all free of charge, and they do it down at the church where they serve the males, Liberty. And they just need a letter of support to continue their funding. What they do as well, if they go bad and there's something bad that shows up, they will send a real doctor the next time, and it's all free of charge. So it's just a letter of support that appreciates nerve powers kind of here in this, if they can continue with what they're doing.
Okay. Motion. You have a motion to any specific, on favor? Some ante costs, Cisco refresh, 28,974.71 cents. Payable payment.
These have been approved in the budget. I just need permission to cut the two for the finance officer to cut the two checks for half payments of each. And then once it's installed, they will get the remaining payments.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Cisco expenditure, Second. I have a motion to approve the property voices data for 47,121.63. Motion. Is there a second? I don't know. You know the names like you know my afternoon. All right, I want to read all these polls, and then we're listening. I have one more motion here.
Don't want to die now.
We're on the first round. See the motions and seconds to second. So we have a poll. We have a poll for NCHF, the insurance office, 639,900. We have a poll for pre-credit, 31,603.42. So what's the difference between the three accounts?
You're going to the budget man that was to purchase the x-ray machine. You selected, the poll was to select the GE company.
Chose the GE company.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the GE machine. Or a poll, we had a poll to revise, pitch back, our parents, 10,650. We had a poll for, I have Stacy Arnold, our finance officer. We had a poll for the payment for the corporate report for 400,000, We had a poll for Cameron Quinlan, Tranny, for 9,746.38. We had a poll for tax micro payments annually, 15,700. And we had a poll to approve paying our monthly architects for the courthouse project of 75,000. We have a motion to approve these polls.
Totally.
Second.
Second.
On favor? Need a motion to approve the foreclosure policy after bidding process. This was recommended by the tax collection office.
It was. You know, we've been bidding on several properties, and that would give them a time limit, and I've got it in your packet. And she didn't give her the Christmas appointment from the school government to make sure the wording was correct. It is, I think it gives them 48 hours to come up with the money. If they don't come up with the money, it goes to the next highest bidder. Therefore, until you run out of the highest bidders, or until it sells.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that Blue Cross Blue Shield policy? On favor? Singer Center's in bike erosion. So Jason's getting bids on that to fix that bike I sent you the other day.
Yeah, and I have pictures in your packet as well. That bank is eroding off pretty good. But I took, we discussed options of what to look at. So real expensive versus what would be the fix. And I think Commissioner Eller had suggested as well, where you spray the grass. Yeah, and then maybe put retaining. We've got to do some way to get that water out. Maybe over drain with concrete drain and then, you know, to come out. So that's not my expertise, of course. That's, so I'll turn that over to the project manager.
My name is...
Well, we can talk about it, right?
Does it have any prices yet?
No prices. I don't think he had any prices.
We're looking at cheap picks as versus picks. Because I'm assuming we're giving the bid what?
Yes, we are. He will, yes.
Cheap picks.
Oh, yeah. Well, we're talking not cheap picks as a retaining wall. You know, so or, you know, hydro seed the bank, and then just maybe put concrete with the drain. Whichever way is the best long-term, because you've got the traffic up top. If you were to put the Justice Center, then you would have more traffic up top. So the bank has to be dealt with. The sooner the better, in my opinion.
So we're looking at Jason to enforce his 12th amendment. Renewables for liability, 168,286. And what was Tom, 12,146.
We actually came in really good. And I don't think if we were any bit over. So we actually came in real good this year with the renewables on that.
Keep the good news. I'm looking to approve that new. On favor? Renewals for bookkeeping, insurance.
We were coming in at 10%, and the good news, they are lowering the cost for the spouse and for the family and with children. So they are trying to work with me to get the dependent coverage down. It's not a whole lot this time, but it is coming down. And next year, we'll be actually in the inch of full for one year, and we'll have the 9,000 members back. And that's so we can actually begin to lower that cost even further if that's what you choose as a board. So we had budgeted for 12%. We're coming in at 10%, so we've got a little bit of wiggle room there as well.
So is there a motion to approve that Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance?
Motion.
Second. On favor? Invitation to the San Francisco Fire Hall on the 20th?
Motion.
Yeah, this is to thank, this is to thank you all for the LATCM funding. They're going to build an addition onto their auxiliary building, or a new one. Is it an addition Keith, or a new one?
They're building a separate building. I don't think it's going to be joined to their existing. I think it's going, I think.
I heard that it was going to be built to it, but I don't know that.
Well, it could be. We've been to, from building this over here to hooking it on to... At one time, they wouldn't let them hook it on, so I don't know what they're coming up with.
That is actually the 27th. That's not this Thursday.
Oh, sorry. It's not this Thursday?
No, it's next Thursday. Because Taco called me to invite me to it.
Well, maybe that's why I thought, we have a board being on at 5:00, so we go down there.
Who said it's the 20th?
27th, next Thursday. Yeah. It says the 20th on the agenda.
Well, Taco will meet this morning.
What he got me is the 27th? Because I checked my phone.
What way should everybody get this?
Hey, public, we need to promise we have the rock game.
He says next Thursday, your 20th is for me.
Well, next, well, this Thursday.
That was last week when he said.
Oh.
So what, might just show up last night?
Yeah, I was out there some time.
If it don't happen, we'll go back next week.
I mean, tax, Taco.
If it happens this week, we now not go back.
Is the help as well? Right, stay in your mouth. I will let you know.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
Can you roll with us?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to go into low session on GS 143318181356? Point privilege to pump financial information, turn on my privilege, motion to the contacts. Is there a second, Timmy?
Want to take this to me?
I have another something. We have a motion to approve the found pay for...
Lori Eller, who was, who thought that is a new hire, and her father has had surgery.
Second. On favor. Do I have a motion to approve the evaluation by mostly architects on site A?
Motion.
Do I have a motion to approve the evaluation by mostly architects on site B?
Motion.
Motion, second, on favor.
I'm opposed.
Just don't stop, Becky.
I say, Joe, it would not be good, rather start thinking sometimes about having some public hearings all the day, like...
A sentence, a sentence, we have to go over there.
Yeah, that's good, I am, I really want that, and I understand, it's fair money, and anyway, we can, you never have to, I'm a, I'm here for it, okay?
All right. Any things?
No, sir.
Motion to... On favor.
Hi, everybody.